November 26th meeting of the Shreveport City Council is now called to order. If you would please stand if your cell phones are not silent or vibrate, this would be a good time to do that. And Councilman Sam Jenkins will open us with an invocation followed by a pledge by Councilman Everson.
Let us pray. Father God, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for your blessings. Father God, we thank you for the sunshine and for the rain. You know we need both to help us to grow. Father God, we thank you for this city that we call home, the great city of Shreveport. We pray now that your spirit will watch over us in our deliberations here today as we try to take care of the business of the people. Father God, we thank you for the privilege to serve and we lift up the mayor of our city, we lift up the members of this council, we lift up our appointed officials, we left up all of the employees of the city of Shreveport, most of all, we lift up our citizens. We pray, Father God, for prosperity in our city, we pray for unity, we pray for direction, and we pray, Father God, that Shreveport be that shining star to shine that we all know it can be when we're working together. It's in the name of Jesus that we pray.
In Jesus' name.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. McCullough here. Mr. Everson?
Here.
Mr. Oliver Jenkins? Mr. Corbin?
Present.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Mr. Shine?
Present.
Mr. Sam Jenkins?
Present.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the November 11th Administrative Conference and the November 12th City Council meeting? Motion by the Vice Chair, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. Please vote. And that is six yes, one out of the chamber. At this point, we will move into council recognitions, awards, and recognition of distinguished guests. I'd like to take just a moment before we get into that and, I guess, take a chairman's privilege and say thank you to the council for your support this year. This will be my last meeting as chairman, and I certainly appreciate the opportunity to serve as chair. Thank you to council staff for bailing me out on numerous occasions and keeping me on the right track. Mayor Glover, thanks to you and your staff and the ability to have open dialogue and to talk with department heads to get information needed and get things done. And it has certainly been an honor to serve this year, and I look forward to moving one seat to my right at this meeting. Or one seat to my left.
Yeah, one seat to your left.
All right, Councilman Everson.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I wanted to start by recognizing Stacy from the Convention and Visitors Bureau who had asked to make a brief presentation to us today.
I have not seen it. Good afternoon, council. Chairman Corbin, Vice Chairman Shine, Mayor Glover. Appreciate y'all allowing me to come before you today to talk to you a little bit about tourism and our budget for this year. You have before you a copy of our 2014 budget, our business plan. I got the final draft last night, so it wasn't quite ready, so I will be sending you that business plan in the next week or so. So you'll have a copy of that as well. At the Convention and Visitors Bureau, we have a true passion for what we do, and we recognize that the things that we do for tourism impact not only those directly involved in tourism, but the community as a whole because it is economic development. Because tourism exists, every person in Caddo and Bossier parishes pays less in taxes. So whether you realize it or not, tourism affects you. So it's very important that we do things to ensure our growth for tourism for the future. Each year, we review our programs to make sure that they're being effective and tweak them to make them better, look at what is happening nationally and regionally to make sure that we're on the cutting edge with our programs as well. And we work with an outside consultant to do that, to make sure that we are really making the best of the funds that we have and providing the greatest economic return on investment. Right now, we are working on three research projects to help us focus our funds better. One of those is a research project with the hotels themselves to look at who is staying in the hotels, where are they coming from, what are they here for? Are they here for business? Are they here for meetings, for sporting events, for military, medical reasons? And kind of looking at our market, we do that every couple of years so that we can keep track of how our market is changing. We're also doing research from our visitors, asking them, what are you doing when you come? What is your experience? What are some things that you would like to see in our community? And where can we make improvements? The third one is with meeting planners, some meeting planners that have come to Shreveport, Bossier, and brought meetings here, and some that would possibly consider us for the future but have not been here. What did they like about our facilities? You know, were we providing good service from the Convention and Visitors Bureau as well as our other facilities? And what can we do to make it better and for them to host more meetings in Shreveport, Bossier? As you know, this has been a challenging year. We have seen a tremendous growth in the number of hotel rooms available. In fact, this year, we have 137,000 more room nights to sell than we did just about 18 months ago. So that's a tremendous amount of inventory to add at one time. So just looking at our markets, looking where we have those growth opportunities, and really positioning ourselves a little bit differently to the marketplace to encourage that increased visitation. This year, we also had the closure of two properties that we use for groups, the Barnwell Garden and Art Center and the Municipal Auditorium, both under renovations with the bond issues. I have been in the municipal and toured that. It's looking really great. I think it's going to be an asset, continue to be an asset, for groups and meetings as well as conventions and other events. So we appreciate your commitment to that facility. It's not only a great facility, it has some tremendous history that's well worth saving it for the future. Also, Cargill Park, I understand that is on the list to be undergone, the renovations before too long, and that will be a tremendous asset with us as well. It's actually been a blessing that things were put off a little bit with our economic downturn. Sports is one of those things that people are going to come and see their grandson, their son, and daughter play in those tournaments. So that's been a tremendous asset for those, especially West End hotels. We do a number of tournaments out there. SPAR is a tremendous partner with us in hosting those, and we appreciate that partnership. This has been our second full year for the Shreveport, Bossier Convention and Tourist Bureau's Division of the Sports Commission, and we appreciate Marquis Pierre, your appointee, as well as Mr. Wesley, as well as Ms. Regal Stone being on that committee as well, helping us to really look at what events are out there, what best fits our market, and look at our facilities as well, and how can we best utilize those. We are continuing to make adjustments. We've been very successful in building some relationships that had been kind of damaged by a previous organization, and we've been able to mend a lot of those fences and get some events back to our area and get some new events as well. In our attractions, we are continuing to provide assistance to them, looking at ways to grow what they're doing and improve what they have to offer. Research nowadays shows that people want to live large and carry little. A few years ago, someone would watch a cooking show and say, I want to buy the $2,800 cooking ware that they're using. Now, they want to go to the destination where the chef is putting on a cooking demonstration. So that bodes well for tourism, but we've got to be experiential and provide those great experiences. So we're actually working with a gentleman to come in and work with our attractions directly and help them improve, continue to improve their experiences that they offer and find new streams of revenue. As you know, as one of the funding agents to some of those attractions, small nonprofits, they need to look at things a little bit differently, and how can they generate funds by using their assets a little bit differently? So we're helping them to do that. This, right now, we've developed something called the Christmas Holiday Hot Deals, where we've partnered with the hotels, along with many of our retail outlets, several of our retail malls, as well as individual stores, to provide a great coupon book that's only available to people who book at the participating hotels. So they get a $20 gift card to Dillard's, as well as some other discounts that are not available to any, to the general public. So we are actually selling a number of those packages to help fill our hotels and bring in revenue to the community, people from outside the area who wouldn't normally shop in Shreveport, Bossier. So that increases our tax revenue as well. Through these programs, we really work to build our destination. We recognize that although our primary reason for existing is to market outside the area so that we bring in those overnight visitors, if they're not having a great experience or having a hard time getting here, then we're not doing our total job. So part of what we do is, is help work on things like I-49 and rail and getting people into the area, working with a cleanup committee to make sure that people are having a nice, clean city to come into and helping to coordinate those different agencies that work on cleanup. Also, working with the cities and the parishes on providing those great parks and how do we help promote those? Y'all work so hard to provide those to our citizens, let's make sure that we're inviting visitors to them as well. We always work on partnerships whenever we can. We recognize that whenever we can partner, we can make everyone's money go further. And so we have a number of divisions of the Bureau that we work with. One of those is Louisiana North, where we work with the 29 parishes north of I-10 to work together to do trade shows, do other marketing together, to work on especially regional areas that may not come to just Shreveport, Bossier, but will come to North Louisiana as a whole and visit Shreveport, Bossier while they're doing that. Another is the Holiday Trail of Lights. We are a partner with eight other cities in Louisiana. We market and promote mainly to bus groups, to travel agents and tour operators, to bring them into the Shreveport, Bossier area and the rest of the areas. And you'll see the Holly Jolly Guide, that's one of the things that we've done to help encourage that visitation from outside the market. Also, the Boomer Bus Byway, that is here in Caddo, Bossier, Webster, and Claiborne parishes, and it helps encourage people to get out and about the parish and stay longer and spend more money in our communities. Some of the major changes in the budget are due largely to our increased role in the sports area. We continue to fund that not only with dollars to the Sports Commission budget, but also within the Bureau budget. Your support of those events and the FLW tournament this year is greatly appreciated. We have worked very hard to practice very sound fiscal and business planning and responsible budgeting. As you know, our income is down, so we have budgeted down for our expenses as well. However, we do work to bring in events that will multiply our expenditures. One of those is coming up this next week. We partnered with the Hilton-Shreveport and the Shreveport Convention Center to start a new Meetings and Convention Trade Show called Rendezvous South. We have about 20 very qualified meeting planners that have agreed to meet in one or more of the six destinations participating. And so they're coming into our market. Some of them are actually coming in early to do site inspections because they want to bring their meeting or event here to Shreveport, Bossier. So meetings like that. Also, next year, we have South Central Motor Coach Association coming here in town. This year, we hosted the North American Travel Journalists Association, where we had about 66 travel writers from across the country with publications like American Way Magazine, Conde Nast Traveler, USA Today, some of those publications you recognize and read on a regular basis. They had writers here in town to write about Shreveport, Bossier while they were hosting their annual meeting here. So these are some of the things that we're doing to increase tourism and bring in revenue to Caddo and Bossier parishes, Shreveport and Bossier City. We would like to invite you to our open house. It is this coming, or this next Friday, not this Friday, December the 6th, from 11:00 to 2:00. It's at our downtown office, and we'd love to have you come by. We have fantastic food, you can't miss it. And that will be a great way to kick off our partnership also with ringing in the season, with lighting and music, and the Red River District. We're partnering with SPAR to put that on, and it'll be music and lights every Friday night in the district in December. So again, Mayor, Chairman Corbin, we appreciate you allowing us to come before today, and if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions?
My only, I don't want to say concern, because, of course, appreciate the two communities so close together, but on some of the revenue numbers, I am a little bit surprised at how close Bossier and Caddo have become. That's it.
And actually, it flipped for a little while. Bossier used to bring in more revenue than Shreveport, more hotels were in Bossier. Then for several years, more hotels were built in Shreveport, and you saw the revenue swing the other way. Now with more hotels in Bossier, we're starting to see it even out. And with the addition of Margaritaville as well.
Sure.
On the Bossier side.
And of course, those are projections for 2014 at this point.
Right, which is pretty close to what we believe we'll actually receive this year. We're expecting to be, probably be up a little bit, but we'd rather budget conservatively, and so that's a pretty flat budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stacy, there were some rumbles going about Bossier separating themselves from us in that department, is...
No, that is...
A false rumor?
That's a false rumor.
Okay, that's good to hear.
Yes, no, not, not as far as...
I figured if anybody knew, you would, so.
Right. No, that's not, not correct.
Stacy, is there anything that we're missing or we need to better develop to, I mean, if you had to name two things that we needed to increase tourism here or convention business based on reactions that you get in your day-to-day work, what would those be?
One of the first things on the sports side, we had a consultant come in a few years ago, and he said, you know, if you could only do one thing, I would put four more soccer fields out at Cargill. You know, it, we do some great tournaments out there already, especially on the baseball and softball side. Because of the number of fields we have for soccer, which is growing very rapidly, we're limited in the size of tournaments we can put out there, so that would open some new opportunities for us. One of the things we are seeing in our research is that people are not as satisfied with our destination as they have been in the past. We rely very heavily on, on repeat visitation, so making sure that we are doing the things we need to do to give them the great experience. You know, one of the things we've done this year is added the WOW training for the taxi drivers. That has been actually very well received by the drivers. A lot of them come in kind of grumbling, but when they leave, they're happy they did it, and they understand that we're trying to help them increase their, their revenue as well. You give great service, you get better tips, and trying to teach them where those visitors are that are going to be needing taxis and how to provide that service. The cleanliness is one of the things that needs to be addressed, and I know Mayor Glover has talked about adding more into this year's budget to do some of that. Also, kind of working everybody together because, you know, there are so many organizations that do a part of it. So we've formed a committee where we're trying to bring all the different, not only in, in Shreveport and Caddo, but in Bossier City and Bossier Parish as well. So we've got the sheriffs and the, the mayors and the, you know, all the, the variety of, you know, Shreveport Green, Keep Bossier Beautiful, you know, the sheriff's offices do a good bit of cleanup, DOTD, and trying to bring all of those efforts together and see how we can magnify them. And we're working on a special campaign for that as well.
I'd just like to say, and it's interesting you say that about the soccer fields or softball fields or whatever, because, you know, one thing that we do put forth a fair amount of money on to are some of these events that come from city revenue that we support, some of these fishing tournaments. Now, clearly, the cost of one of those fishing tournaments could do significant dent into a couple of soccer fields. And so I think that's maybe from your perspective of what brings people to the city, I hope that's part of that consideration.
Absolutely. It's really important when we look at events that we keep a variety of events. So some are what we call more spectator sports, which a lot of times will bring more people in. Say, you know, Johnny has a baseball tournament, and there's 150 teams, and so all the players and then their parents and grandparents are going to come, that's going to bring a lot of overnight visitors. So that has one type of economic impact. Something like an FLW has a direct as well as an indirect because of the television coverage and the public relations value of the event. For instance, one of the conventions that we just got a yes on, they saw the tournament on NBC and said, you know what, I have a waterways convention. This is a great waterway. We've never considered coming to Shreveport, Bossier before, but why not? So they came here for their board meeting and decided to host their annual convention here in 2015. So some of, it has some additional residual effects other than just the tournament itself. So some of those also raise awareness that will bring you other events. Because of those events, like Bass Master Classic and the FLW, when the Texas was having its drought this year, there's an organization called Bass Champs, and it's the Texas State Bass Championship. They said, our body of water is too low. Last minute, we have to move our tournament. We've got a little over 30 days. Where can we move it that we know they can accommodate us and, and turn it this fast? So they gave us a call and said, we saw you hosted the Bass Master Classic and that you're about to host FLW. We would love to host our tournament there in October. Can you make it, can you make that happen on that short of a turnaround? And we could. So for that, we hosted 250 boats, you know, with two anglers in each, plus their friends and family that attended, at a very low cost. So some of these bigger tournaments, when you look at it just by itself, you may think that's a lot to pay for that, but you've also got to consider the other things that are a spinoff from those events.
Any other questions? Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you, Stacy. Thank you. Have a great day. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
I could make one more recognition. I know that Jay Myers with Biomedical Research Center is here and has a presentation for us. And it, just since I don't want to hog everyone's time, before we listen to the presentation, I did want to take a brief moment to thank the Fire Department and the Louisiana ATF for the arrest that was made on the Olive Street Bistro situation. Obviously, that is a, that was a much-loved restaurant in my district, and it was sad to see what happened there, and arrest was made, and it was a very thorough investigation. So I just want to take a moment to thank and appreciate those folks that had a, had a part in, in seeing that through.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. President Corbin, members of the City Council, Mayor Glover, thank you again for having us discuss, I think, a very exciting project for Shreveport, Bossier, and North Louisiana. It's called the Entrepreneurial Accelerator Program. But before I get into that, I wanted to explain just a little background on, on the Biomedical Research Foundation. You know, over the past 20 years, the Biomed has helped to pioneer many new innovative projects for this area, to advance knowledge-based economic development in North Louisiana, and we believe it's had a significant impact on our community. Over $266 million over the last 20 years has been raised to advance this effort that we've been developing, and, and that has only come with a 12% coming from Caddo Parish tax dollars. And that's an eight to one return on our local investment. So what I wanted to do now is just kind of take you through a little PowerPoint presentation here, because I think a key of this whole effort has been the spirit of the community. It's a yes, we can spirit that really started out when we began building the Biomedical Research Institute and its 56 state-of-the-art research labs. These labs have helped the LSU School of Medicine triple their yearly extramural support for funding the researchers who are working to find cures to disease and management and the treatment of disease. So that's been a really important part of what we've done, one of the key projects of the Virginia K. Sheehy Biomedical Research Institute. Another important thing that we've advanced is the Intertech Science Park. If you take a look at the corner of Mansfield and Kings Highway back in 1999, you can see a bingo and a Family Dollar. That's been transformed here in 2013 through the building of the Intertech Science Park, the 10 facilities that we have that house 23 tenants and employ 360 individuals with an annual payroll of $18 million. These are some of the tenants. Red River Pharma, who was recently bought out by Nestle Corporation, it's the world's leading nutrition corporation. They're going to, we believe, expand operations within the science park through Red River Pharma, and that's very exciting. You have Academy Award-winning Moonbot Studios is one of our tenants, and the young creative spirit that that's brought to our area through the Moonbot Studios. You've got Brady Blade and his studio and how they interact with all the things that go on in the community is a very important tenant within the community. So you can see the, the impact that, that this science park has had. The, the most recent accomplishment, and probably our largest accomplishment over the last 20 years that we're most proud of, is our management and operation of now University Health Shreveport and University Health Conway. That's over 3,500 employees and a $1 billion economic impact to our community. The Entrepreneurial Accelerator Program that we're going to talk to you a little bit about today is going to leverage each of these assets that you've seen and also additional assets that we have in our community. The program is outlined in this packet. I'm going to give that to you at the end of the presentation, but it's a 16-page proposal. It has all the, all the details of where we think this can advance our community, and you'll have the opportunity to look at that, you know, during the coming weeks as you decide if you're interested in, in moving this forward. But let me just briefly tell you what, what this is all about. You know, basically, what the entrepreneurial program does is it links those individuals that have new ideas, you know, whether that's a new barbecue sauce or a new lab on a chip. It could be, you know, and anything in between, and we link those up with high net worth individuals. I mean, that is really the essence of it because those high net worth individuals can provide the seed dollars to actually move those companies forward and grow them. Now, this is a model that we, that has been very successful in other cities. We've looked at the Austin model. We'll talk to you a little bit about that. Some of the council men and women went with us on that trip. We looked at the San Francisco model through the Silicon Valley. We looked at the model in Columbus, Ohio, went and visited that, as well as Oklahoma City when the mayor took that sister city tour, and UAB. All these are doing similar types of programs, and we've actually taken some of the ingredients of those programs, and we're going to offer those to, to our city to really move forward this whole endeavor. You know, really, leading our charge in this, our secret weapon is Dr. John George. He's the president and chairman of the Board of the Biomedical Research Foundation, and believe me, the guy really has, he has a lot of skills, not over, I know you've read a lot about him in the paper because of his skill and mergers and acquisitions and, and working with our chairman of the Board, Steve Scovinos, to really move forward that, that bellwether commitment and accomplishment with the University Health and at Conway and in Shreveport. But in addition to that, Dr. George was instrumental in connecting us with a gentleman that you're going to hear from in a five-minute video, Dr. Sibley Butler, John Sibley Butler, who is actually a 2012 LSU Alumni's of the Year. Dr. George is, sits on the Board of Supervisors. They met serendipitously at a Tiger football game because actually Dr. Butler was in the Tiger band before he went off to Northwestern, got his PhD, and ended up at the University of Texas 35 years ago. Currently, Dr. Butler is the Herb Kelleher Chair in Entrepreneurship at the University of Texas at Austin. He's been there over 35 years, and he understands the model that we're going to present and move forward here in Shreveport, and he's been helping to share this with individuals around the world, countries, cities, that this particular institute is working with. Well, two weeks ago, the Biomedical Research Foundation with the Caddo Parish Commission and a lot of other civic leaders went off to Austin for a trip to actually meet with Dr. Butler to learn firsthand the success story of the Austin model. And, you know, during that time, we got to see a lot of things that Austin's doing, learn about the model, and, and take this information back to, to Shreveport. Dr. Butler has visited Shreveport many times during the last two years that we've been working with him. And Council Rose McCullough, when we went up to Austin and met with Dr. Butler and his team two weeks ago, she said, Jay, wouldn't it be great if we could bring Dr. Butler in to address the city council about the opportunities that this presents us? Unfortunately, he had another commitment, but he, he has put together this brief five-minute video that I wanted to share with you and, and actually give you a little overview of some of the things that we saw in Austin. of the things that we saw in Austin.
I'm John Sirdibutler, coming to you from my office at the Herb Kelleher Center for Columbus School of Business at the University of Texas at Austin. It's indeed a pleasure to speak to the city council from Shreveport. My video, I wish I could be there, but my travel schedule has allowed me to go to Shreveport at this time. I've got to jump on a airplane and do some other stuff. Right now, I just want to say that I certainly enjoyed meeting Rose McCullough and John Anderson when they came to the group from Shreveport. We had a great time discussing the possibilities of Shreveport, adding to all the great things that you've done already. And one of the things I really want to say is that as we look to the model of wealth creation and job creation through technology transfer, it's good to have a person like Dr. George who understands the model. You have a hospital there. I talked to Jay about creating a situation where talent, creativity, and technology is transferred. And of course, when this is done, all kinds of enterprises tend to come about. You have the technology and enterprises, both of Whole Foods coming there. You'll also find it becomes a synergy for everybody wants to be around that kind of activity. I think it's also important to know as we go forward that understanding this model is very, very important. Your mayor came over. We had a great time. I've been along around the city of Austin, and so he can understand and see the model, that is, the outcome of looking at technology transfer. And what we're really talking about is creating companies and creating new ideas and new companies through the idea of science, combining science and business. And with the hospital there, you guys really have a leg up, if you will, on the model. For example, in Austin, Texas, we're just planning a hospital because we know the future of biotech, the future of science coming out there will be very, very wonderful and very, very great. And, you know, what we want to do is take the elements of Austin, especially how do we look at technologies and assess technologies to Shreveport. And we look far on Shreveport, becoming now a hub of Shreveport, a hub of Whole Foods everywhere, for the whole southeast. Right now, when people come to me, I sit there for Shreveport. So I had a great company from Lafayette to come see me about what they were doing. They're already cash positive. They do about $5 million in revenue. And they have an app which allows hospitals to become volunteer. But they need some help in looking at and assessing the technology. So I've already sat there for the biomedical group so that they can assist in what they want to do. The other thing I think we should point out is that going forward, this stuff is exciting. It's exciting when you get in the game. It's exciting when you become part of a new model for American citizens. And this new model, of course, is manifesting itself throughout America. I think that when you look at what people are doing across the country, everybody's always brought confidence to the city. We do that well in Austin. What's new about the model is saying, we can take the science and the technology that's developed in the different universities, whether it's Northwestern or Northwestern or Northwestern, or the U of Tech, or the LSU Shreveport, or wherever the university is at that, at what's important to them. Can we take the new ideas and make them in the market? Can we prove them in industry development? Can we start independent companies that become very competitive?
Yeah, that's my opinion, honestly.
So I think that we want to, for, to, 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 to.
Oh, he's going down.
Technology does not seem to be transferring through to the presentation, but...
All right. Well, listen, he was just about done, and I think, I think you can see his excitement in, in working with us during the, you know, the coming years as we try to connect those idea...
Go, go, go.
Omnipresent. He's going to get his words in.
Dr. George, did you want to say anything before we closed it?
One of the takeaways...
John, if you could come up to the mic.
One of the takeaways that I came away with when we went down there was, when they started, 350,000 people. Okay? 1989. And now there are 800,000 people. And so, you know, it's like, and he says it a lot, he didn't say it much in that, but, you know, if you want to get in the game, this is a way to get in the game. And we've looked at, you know, three or four models. We really are basing it more off of Tech Columbus than we are Austin, but he was closer, and he's more dynamic, and he's from Louisiana, and I thought that was very important. Not only that, but I was there when he made a similar presentation to Baton Rouge, when Baton Rouge was 350,000 people, okay? And so, and they didn't quite grasp the idea. And so I think this is a time and a moment in history where, you know, they're fumbling around down in Baton Rouge, and if we can get our act together and we can bring John and Tech Columbus idea here, it's not, it's not original, it's proven, and we can put that in place here, we have a leg up. They're passing a billion-dollar tax to build a medical school in Austin. That's what he was talking about, not a hospital. He misspoke. He meant a medical school. We got it. We got it here. We just got to organize around these siloed assets that we have and put some funding behind them and get them off the dime and give it a shot. Will it work? I don't have a crystal ball. What I'm telling you, they did it in Tech Columbus, okay? And they've created, our numbers, if you look at them, are based off of their numbers. They're about the same size city we are. Of course, they got, you know, Ohio State close by, and Baton Rouge has LSU, and Austin has UT. But we have universities here. We have, you know, LSU, HSC. We have Tech. We have Northwestern. We have Southern. We have Grambling. We have Bossier Community College, and better yet, we have our community. And I think those ideas are going to come out of our community. Each one of y'all, at some point in time, has had an idea about starting a business, doing something, and it stopped right there because you didn't have the resources to go to, to give you the support, to get it from your brain into action. And that's what we're trying to create. And so that's my appeal to y'all. I hope you read the stuff. Thank you very much.
Dr. George, could you, before you sit down? Could you kind of talk briefly about the Angel Support Group? Because it seems like you're becoming organized and in order for this, in order for us to make it happen.
Right. One of the things that Rose is talking about and that we, that I explain like this, there's three to four buckets that you have to have together for this stuff to work. The first bucket is the idea bucket, and that's what I'm talking about, the universities. I'm talking about our community, you know, that's the idea bucket. And inside the idea bucket, they have to have support there, okay? They got to have research dollars. They got to have, you know, tech transfer that everybody talks about. And that, all that is, is getting the ideas and saying, hey, you identify an idea. And then, once you move out of that, you have to have a decision support team. And that's what we're trying to do right here, is decision support. And those are people that understand how to get something from the idea stage to market. And that can raise the money for it. They're just getting it prepared to go say, Oliver, I got a deal. I want you to look at it. It's a water deal, and here it is, and this is why. And I did this, and I saw it work over here in Saudi Arabia, and I think if we did that, we could put it in all business. That's what, that's what we are missing right now. It's going to cost this much. Here are the legal ramifications. Here's the business plan. Here's what we think. Here's what we're going to do. And then, we're going to give you a market to go present these ideas to rich individuals. Then the next bucket is the angel fund bucket. And that angel fund bucket, right now, is our wealthy individuals in this community. And when I say this community, I mean the architects all the way over to Mississippi and East Texas, the individuals that want to support their community, okay? But they don't have the vehicle for it. It's a one-off thing. If you're lucky and somebody hears that you got a little bit of money, they show up in your office on Friday and they go, hey, here's a deal. And you look at it and you go, you know, I don't know anything about water deals. I don't know anything about, you know, whatever deal they bring. Usually, it's a medical deal, and nobody understands that. So you got to have a team of people to look at this and vet it and put it in a form that you believe that somebody more intelligent than you looked at it and thinks it's good. And then, it's got to fit your personality. If you like those kind of deals, then you'll invest. The angel fund group is going to be, and Jay, this is his forte, and I've been begging him to, you know, this is where I think he fits in the team, is to organize these people that have the money to try to put a fund together, the early-stage people to help these companies. There's $2 million sitting in Baton Rouge waiting to be matched with money if we could raise it up here, okay? So we're in that process to try and raise the money to go get the match. So if we can raise $2 million locally, we can get $2 million from Baton Rouge. And get that part started, but who cares if you have a seed fund if you don't have the development team fund? And that doesn't work if you don't have the idea fund or the idea stage. So you have to have all these pieces, and that's why economic development has not worked very well in this region, because we don't have this stuff. What we do is we market, hey, come here, we'll give you some tax incentive, you know, blah, blah, blah. And some of them, they're really diligent, come here, but you're competing against Dallas and Austin and East Texas even. I mean, most of the manufacturer we lose is right in Longview. It's not, it's not, it's not Dallas. It's right there. So we have to do it a little differently. I'm not saying we give up on all that stuff, because, you know, I still think you still try to do that. Those are usually the big things. When you get the big car companies or you do such and such, or you buy, you buy the conventions to come into town. This is supporting our people, supporting our, our knowledge base that we have here. And it is here. It truly is. I mean, look what happened in Austin. I mean, Dell came out of Austin, he was a kid. He came to the IC2 Institute. The very first, this is, this is something, this very first company, and I can't remember the name right now, that the IC2 Institute helped was a lady from Byrd, and she made her multimillion dollars. She went to Austin, and in her book that she wrote, she said, "I had to leave Shreveport because I didn't have any support." She was a Byrd graduate. That was in the late '80s. You know, so we, we have the people, we just don't have the support, and I believe that's what government should do. Government should put these things in place to, to give the support to the people so then they can work themselves out into the private sector. And so, again, that's the angel fund, and I think that's a piece that we're also trying to do. But the main piece you got to have to make this all work is the development piece, and that's what we're asking y'all for money for.
Now, in that last bucket, that's where we fit in, right? The council?
No, you fit in. The fit in, the bucket that we fit in is the bucket, the development team. That's the piece that we need to put to go hire the talent to vet these projects.
It's going to take money for that, right?
That's right.
Okay. So as I understood it, I didn't get that from you guys during the presentation, but there were some figures floating around that maybe there were some expectations from, not only the city council, but the commission and Bossier as well.
Right. Well, we decided just to, you know, Cattle Parish Commission would have been four times trying, you know, so we're just trying to give you the flavor of the ideas. I mean, my goal, I can tell you, I'm trying to raise $10 million over a five-year period of time, $2 million a year. I know that, you know, the city says, I don't have that kind of money. I'm looking for all sorts of support. I'm looking at not only from y'all, I'm looking from the Cattle Parish Commission. I'm going to be going over to Bossier. We're going to be doing all this stuff. This is what the BRF should be doing. The hospital deal, I want to make perfectly clear, is a separate, you know, a separate animal. We helped that because we think it's economic development. We didn't want to lose those jobs. We thought it was central to our mission. But this is truly what the BRF should be doing. Once that board gets established, they'll have their own CEO, they're going to have their own, you know, game plans and criteria, and they're going to be doing their thing. The BRF should be supporting this, and the reason why you support this is because the home run is going to be sitting over in that medical school. You know, the home run, the ones that, you know, Whole Foods came out of IC2 Institute. Now, that's not a, you know, but that was a home run. Victoria's Secrets came out of Tech Columbus. We all know about that one. That was a home run. Austin must have, they have a wall with at least, what, 200 companies up there now? That they have their plaques when they come through the IC2 Institute. They put their plaques up there. And it's phenomenal. And what's happening is, you know, it supports itself now. I mean, I think Dell, he said that Dell made 36 multimillionaires when that company was made. So, and then they start doing their own little companies and doing their things, and so a lot of that stuff is spun out of that. See, you know, you do this, you don't know if it's going to work or not, but if you in the game, you have a chance, and you might be able to hit the home run. And if we can hit the home run, it might turn our economy around, might turn our tax base around, and that's what we're all scared to death about. And this is just a chance to try to do that. It is a lot of money. I know it, but I feel comfortable that this is the right organization. I believe it's the right place to do it at. I think they proved that they've done it. They have a lot of the pieces. When I got there, I was surprised how many pieces they already have in place, but they don't have this central development team that I think that needs to be done. And if y'all go, if you read this, go to Tech Columbus and look. This is a great story. I know I've run over my time, but it seems like I got, nobody's fallen asleep on me yet. When I came back to town and we were trying to, I was trying to get them in Baton Rouge to do this. So I can just tell you, they're not doing it down there very well at all, okay? And I came back and I said, "Let's try to do this at LSU, because, you know, why not do a microcosm? You know, if the states not, can't get off their butts and figure it out, let's try to do it up here." So I got up here and I met a guy named Tony Giardana, and I told Tony what I was trying to do. He was a tech transfer guy at LSU. And he says, "That is a great idea." He says, "They're already doing it at Tech Columbus." I didn't even know it. And he said, "They raised me $800,000, and I'm moving, and so I'm not going to be at this job much longer to help you." And I said, "Really?" I said, "How are they doing it?" And he said, "Come with me." So I got a plane, I flew up there, and that night, they raised him $1 million through this angel fund. They had a little meeting, it'd be like Easter Ridge. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't something fancy. It was like, like, you know, just Easter Ridge. They had drinks and food, and they sat up there, and they had about 10 guys. I learned more about coal mining, finding a coal miner than I ever knew before, because some guy developed a, you know, some kind of transistor that would transmit a location, you know, five miles under the earth. You wouldn't think that was a big deal, but apparently satellites don't work and blah, blah, blah. But he did it. And that was one of the deals, and they had all these deals. And they have a little team that they do to vet these things, and then they go back in a room, and people that are interested in investing come up and they say, "Hey, I'm interested in investing," and they have this process. And they raised this guy $1 million. So he, through the process, $1,800,000 was raised through his wealth, through the wealthy people in that area of Columbus. He moved his whole, he lived down on Elbey Road. He moved his whole, sold his house, moved his whole family to Columbus, and he's up there now. The biomed actually made a little investment in his company. So we, we get to stay on, you know, the information trail, and he's still struggling and doing well, but, you know, I think that, you know, that's part of the entrepreneurship. And they have, I think, about five or six employees. They're all making around $50,000 to $70,000 a year. And, you know, you know, I hope, I hope for him that it's successful, but I'm very envious that he should never have left Shreveport. And that's why I'm, I'm passionate about this. I hate to see our brightest go to other places and get these kind of jobs when they're right here in Shreveport, and we just need this kind of organization to support them, support our constituents. I mean, we need this for us. You know, I've lived here. I tell people this all the time. I was born here. I went to Captain Shreve. I went to... I was born here, I went to Captain Shreve, I went to Erie Drive, I went to Riverside, and I went to LSU. I came back, I'm gonna die here. You know, so, why don't we try to make this a better place? This is my, my little push to try to make it a better place, and that's why I'm here to help, you know, ask for y'all's assistance. And I hope that y'all look, read this stuff and not go to sleep, and see if you can't, you know, you know, see it my way. And if not, I think, you know, if you do something with somebody else, I think you need to look at this model, 'cause I really believe that this is the right model. Thank you.
Any questions?
Uh-huh. Chairman, I just, I don't have any questions. Uh, I see one of the best two lawyers in town sitting back there, Ron and my good friend Sam, uh, two of the best lawyers in town, Oliver, in case you didn't know it.
Unfortunately, I don't need one today.
Oh, okay.
I don't think so, but we'll-
Okay.
This meeting's not quite over yet.
I know, it's early.
Well, that's true, and, uh, I think we have a state representative in, uh, Patrick Williams, wanna just raise your hand, and, and they, and, uh, Dr. George, y'all might wanna give, uh, Patrick one, if you don't, if you didn't.
I'm admiring that.
You know, we can always use a little money from the state. And I'm, and I'm told that he and Bobby General are good friends, so if you don't have the governors here, he might be able to help you out on that.
Say how much you need.
Oh, okay. Pat, good to see you down here. Uh, Ron, it's good to see you. Now, Oliver might need a lawyer now before the, before the session is over. Sam was right, so I don't, I don't know about that.
I normally just refer to you for my legal help.
Oh.
Any other recognitions from council members?
Sure, I'm gonna overlook a third good lawyer, attorney, uh, Curtis Joseph, that's right there.
You're right.
Curtis does a great job for the city of Shreveport, we certainly appreciate him. Also, Mr. Chairman, why I have-
Curtis, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, my glasses are a little fogged up. I saw Ron earlier.
You can't see me from around here.
Yeah, there you go.
Why I have the, uh, floor, Mr. Chairman, uh, I just wanna send some congratulations to our Public Works Department. I had the opportunity to go to, I wanna say, two or three community meetings the past couple of weeks, and, uh, there's a lot of people who are complimenting the work that they see being done on the streets, uh, throughout the city of Shreveport. I know District G, uh, work is, uh, somewhat been completed on Lake Shore Drive and Jewella, uh, as well as Midway. I know there's some other streets, uh, that, uh, sell out for bid, but throughout the city, there is a good buzz, uh, and, and good enthusiasm, uh, from our citizens to see that the, uh, 2011 barn issue, those projects are moving forward. You know, people like to see things, they like to see it, and, uh, even though it may be somewhat of an inconvenience when it comes to traffic or whatever, uh, they, they find it to be a pleasant inconvenience, because it's something, uh, that, uh, shows a sign of progress. So, just wanna compliment all those persons who are involved with the various streets that have been repaired throughout our city, uh, good work. You often hear a lot of complaints, but, uh, it's good to pass along, Mr. CEO, some, some compliments from time to time, and that work is being complimented, uh, just about anywhere I go, Mr. Chairman, right now, so, congratulations on that.
We appreciate that, Mr. Chairman.
Also, I'd like to acknowledge the CEO of the David Raines Medical Center, Mr. Willie White. If you raise your hand, uh, glad to have you here with us today.
If there are no other council recognitions, Mr. Mayor, turn it over to you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Members of the council, uh, would like to, uh, to start with, um, the announcement of an event that, uh, I think some of us had hoped that we might have gotten a chance to be able, uh, to attend today. It was initially scheduled for, uh, 2:30 to 2:45, um, got pushed back to 4 o'clock and then pushed up again to about 3:45, so, I haven't gotten any texts or emails indicating exactly whether or not it has in fact transpired, but, uh, the governor announced, uh, earlier today that he was coming up, uh, for, uh, ceremonial ribbon cutting, uh, and I'm assuming this will mean that it will be, uh, accessible from this point, uh, forward, uh, for a significant stretch of I-49 North. Uh, as you all know, um, there has been, uh, an ongoing effort over the last, uh, at least 15 to, to 18 years. Uh, I know dating back to my initial service on the, uh, in the Louisiana Legislature, uh, where Mike Foster appointed me as a member of the I-49 Funding Task Force. He made, uh, a Shreveport native, and I believe he's at BHP Billington right now, after having served some time at, uh, at KCS. Uh, but Tommy Clark was the first chairman of that I-49 Funding Task Force. Uh, I know that Bob Gorman, uh, took on that duty and responsibility, uh, for a period of time with Tango Trucking. I think Representative Henry Burns may be Governor Jendel's current designated to that effort. Uh, the good news is, is that as a result, uh, of, uh, more than a decade and a half of effort, uh, probably, uh, one of the most significant contributions of which came from the work of Congressman Jim McQuarrie, uh, who delivered some 200-plus million at one time, uh, from one of the omnibus, uh, federal transportation bills to that effort, uh, I-49 North, uh, from the Arkansas-Louisiana State Line to I-220, uh, is fully funded. Uh, and to date, uh, a segment of that road, uh, that would take one, uh, from US Highway One, uh, essentially North Market, um, uh, from that point north, uh, to, uh, Highway 71, uh, just, uh, between the Houston and Gilliam area, where, uh, Mr. White in fact has one of his facilities. Uh, that particular stretch of Interstate 49, uh, should be open, uh, as of, uh, this afternoon, based upon actions and efforts, uh, by, as I mentioned, uh, a whole group of folks at the state, the federal, uh, and the local level. As I informed you, Mr. Chairman, uh, earlier today, uh, the city of Shreveport even, despite the fact that this is, uh, a state and federally funded project, and, uh, interstates are funded, uh, in a 80/20, uh, federal to state funding ratio, with the state providing 20%, and the federal government providing 80% of the funding. Uh, the city of Shreveport, uh, through the support of the previous council, uh, directed some, uh, five-plus million dollars, uh, to, uh, to the effort. And so, uh, even here at the local level, uh, we have been involved, engaged, uh, and we look forward to, uh, not just this segment coming open, but the entire, uh, completion of the 33-plus miles that will give us, for the very first time in this state's history, uh, a north-south interstate system that will be able to take you on a controlled access road system from the Arkansas-Louisiana State Line all the way down, uh, to the southern reaches of, of Louisiana. So, uh, we are excited, uh, we believe that it obviously will bring with it a great deal of continued opportunity, growth, and development for Shreveport, Bojor, and North Louisiana, uh, and certainly open up without question substantial portions of northern Cattle Parish for development, uh, in that there is going to be some 11 to 13 interchanges, uh, between the state line and where the interstate will end up connecting at I-220. Uh, each one of those interchanges represents an opportunity for people to get on and get off, uh, and that translates into development for commercial, residential, and all those sorts of things. So, uh, we look forward to, uh, to getting a chance to drive down that stretch of 49 as soon as we get a chance to wrap up it a day. I'm gonna go out and see if I can't, uh, take Black Beauty up for a quick spin to the country and come back and see how she rides. Uh, also, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, want to share with you all that, uh, on Saturday, December 7th, uh, we are, uh, convening a master plan, uh, update, planning, and feedback session. Uh, for those of you who can remember long enough, uh, it was in December of 2007 when we initially, uh, presented the idea and concept of, uh, of doing a master plan, uh, for Shreveport and Cattle Parish. Uh, in 2009, that effort took off, uh, in earnest. Uh, it was two-plus years, uh, in the process of that effort being done. Uh, this council, along with the Cattle Parish Commission, uh, as well as the Metropolitan Planning Commission, all signed off, uh, on that Shreveport-Cattle Master Plan, uh, 2030, uh, sometime in 2011. Uh, one of the things that the master plan calls for, uh, is a periodic review, an update, uh, and an opportunity to be able to have a dialogue, uh, with, uh, interested citizens about whether or not, uh, we are in fact still headed in the same direction of the other factors and issues, uh, developing around us right now that need to be, uh, factored in, uh, and used to either expand, redirect, augment, uh, otherwise enhance, uh, the effort of our master planning efforts. It's not intended to be a static document that ends up just simply on a shelf, but being used, uh, as a means of helping us to, uh, further direct and maximize the opportunities and potential that we possess within this region. Uh, one thing I had on my list was already referenced by, um, Stacy, um, with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and that is, uh, we will be hosting here in Shreveport, uh, between the Hilton and the Convention Center, uh, the group Rendezvous South, as she mentioned, that's a consortium of meeting planners, uh, who are all, uh, touring a group of cities that are inclusive of other communities like Savannah, uh, and urban Texas, uh, and Baton Rouge. Shreveport happens to be one, uh, and those folks will be here having a chance to be able to, uh, see, visit, and view, uh, what we have to offer, uh, and in turn, use that as a means of hopefully helping us to bring back, uh, more, uh, folks to be a part of, um, of what exactly is happening and, uh, potentially going on from a, uh, meeting, uh, convention, and event standpoint. Uh, also, uh, Mr. Chairman, as you can recollect, uh, it was, uh, at some point last week, I believe it would have been, uh, last Thursday or so, not remembering directly. I left you a voicemail indicating I'd just left, uh, a meeting of the, uh, Executive Committee of the Cattle-Bojor Office of Emergency Preparedness and Homeland Security. I shared with you at that time, uh, that sentiment had been expressed at that meeting by our neighbors across the river in Bojor, uh, that they'd like to, to end that relationship. Uh, obviously, that's a sentiment that we here in Shreveport, uh, don't share at this point. Uh, it's right in line with what, um, Mr. Weback Stacy, with regard to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Uh, there have been those, uh, rumors about the possibility of that entity possibly looking to, to, uh, to, to go separate and alone. Um, and, uh, the actual truth of the matter is, is that, that situation has not taken, uh, any, uh, direction, but, uh, with regard to the Office of, uh, Emergency Preparedness and Homeland Security, uh, that interest and desire has been expressed. Uh, I, I shared that with, uh, with the chairman, asked that he pass that, uh, message along to you all as council members, uh, myself and, uh, Parish Administrator Woody Wilson and Sheriff Prater were in attendance at that meeting. Uh, that group is scheduled to meet back again, uh, members, on the 15th of January of next year. Uh, what I have asked, uh, in the interim, uh, is to have the opportunity, uh, to, uh, work with the parish and the sheriff, uh, to convene an intergovernmental meeting, uh, to where we would have an opportunity to be able to share in detail, uh, exactly the sentiment that has been expressed to us, uh, and to ensure that you all, as well as the, uh, bulk of our citizens, both here in Cattle and Bojor, are aware of that, uh, and ultimately provide some feedback. Uh, this is a situation, uh, that represents a cooperative endeavor agreement, uh, and, uh, by agreement, any of the parties involved can, uh, separate and no longer be a participant by just simply providing 90 days' worth of notice. Uh, I do, though, I think it's, uh, quite significant, uh, to, um, establish that this is an entity, uh, that started, uh, some 60 years ago, 1953, uh, as the, uh, Cattle-Bojor Office of, um, Civil Defense. Uh, for those of you who are old enough to remember, uh, they used to be office over in the parking lot of the old City Hall, which is now our police department, uh, in that little two-story building in near vicinity where the city court sits today. Uh, and Chuck Mazzotti was the guy who was in, uh, charge when, uh, when I came along, um, for 60 years. That particular entity has served to, uh, ensure that there is a coordinated effort, uh, with regard to emergency, uh, between the cities of Shreveport and Bojor and the parishes of Cattle and, and Bojor Parish. Um, I think the first duty and responsibility that we have as government officials, uh, is to keep our people safe. Um, and this is one of the means and mechanisms by which I think we have collectively done a, a good job of that. Uh, I find it interesting that we choose to partner on other things like conventions and visitors bureaus and, uh, sports commissions and even ports and what have you. Um, but we, uh, seemingly are moving in a direction where we are choosing to go our separate ways when it comes to fulfilling that prime directive, and that is to ensure, uh, that we keep, uh, the folks that who have elected us and given us their trust, uh, as safe as possible, especially during, uh, times of, of great stress and emergency. And so, uh, we're gonna be reaching out to council staff and, uh, commission staff, uh, and any others who would be interested, to see if on Friday, the 13th, uh, we can't, uh, since the city of Shreveport is due to host the next intergovernmental meeting, uh, if we can't convene that, uh, for sometime in the lunchtime hour of the 13th, uh, would ask that you all check your schedules and give us a chance to be able to, to see if we can actually get that meeting set, so this dialogue, uh, can continue. Obviously, we can't, uh, stop, uh, our neighbors from withdrawing. Uh, we would hope, uh, that folks on both sides of the river, uh, would engage in further discussion and dialogue about what we think is a very, uh, important matter, uh, and keep together a partnership, uh, that has, uh, served us all well, and I think is without question, uh, even more necessary as we go into the future. Uh, lastly, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, uh, since the council has, uh, done the, uh, the courtesy of having the executive session on the Harrison matter on yesterday, uh, which I think was extremely informative and very helpful, uh, but there's also still a large hue and cry of folks out, uh, in the neighborhood in particular, of the Cooper Road MLK area who are impacted and affected by this, and other folks who drive in and around that I-220 area, uh, who have questions, uh, that because of some of the issues in litigation, we've not been able to give the kind of thorough, uh, and complete answers to. Uh, we'd like to be able to move forward, uh, with having at least, uh, one, uh, if not more, public meetings here in the next, uh, several weeks as well, where we intend to be able to, uh, to share in detail with our citizens exactly what it is that's going on. We'll obviously, uh, utilize the, the council and direction of, uh, of our legal council with regard to how we conduct those, uh, but we also think it's about time that we, uh, empower folks with more information, more knowledge, and also maybe even give them some direction in terms of how they may want to, uh, use the rights that they have as citizens to help better, uh, address, uh, and resolve this situation as well. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, turn it back over to you.
Mr. Mayor, that meeting, uh, of the intergovernmental committee, I'm assuming that's gonna be at Indy Stadium?
Well, no, we, we're looking for an alternate location. Uh, staff tells me that it's not going to be available, uh, and so, we're looking at Riverview Hall or one of our other, uh, available public venues. Uh, and we will, we will get, uh, a confirmation of the date, as well as the, the time and location, to you all as soon as we confirm it up.
Thank you. Mayor Glover, if we could, if there's any information that you could send out to us via email about what the Office of Emergency Preparedness and Homeland Security, their role, uh, just some basic background information that we can familiarize ourselves with, that would be good.
We'll do it. Uh, in fact, I'll, I'll ask, uh, I know we have, uh, Chief Self and, uh, uh, someone here from SPD, have we got, uh, Cap here? We'll ask them to take the lead in pulling together an informational packet. We also have some, uh, we'll provide a copy of the actual original, um, cooperative endeavor between the, the two cities, the two parishes, uh, as well as a copy of the most recent, uh, cooperative endeavor agreement that goes back to, uh, 2007. Uh, absolutely. Definitely wanna put the, you all and the commission and others in a position, as well as our citizens, in a position to be able to, to have a, a full appreciation of exactly the length of the relationship, the, the nature of it, and, and why we still see great value in benefiting it. Uh, but as was ultimately expressed during the, uh, the executive committee meeting, you know, it's very hard to stand a relationship, uh, when, uh, when somebody else wants to leave. Uh, but, uh, as I stressed then, and I stress now, uh, it makes no sense to me, uh, to work together, uh, on convention and visitors, it makes no sense to me to go out and, and chase bad mitten and soccer, uh, tournaments, it makes no sense to me to go out and develop a port together, uh, all of which are important, uh, and have a great benefit and a great impact. Uh, but the first and foremost responsibility we have is to safeguard our citizens, and if we can't figure out how to work together on that, then we've got some, some real challenges. So, uh, we, we look forward to the dialogue going forward. We want to talk with, with all of our parties on the cattle side, as I said, here in the month of December, and then be in a position, uh, for that meeting that is scheduled again on the 15th of January, uh, to hopefully, uh, take back a perspective that, um, might end up resulting in some, some reconsideration.
Councilman Oliver Jenkins.
Yeah, I'll say that, just on that note, and I've been following a little bit of it on the periphery, obviously, they, one of the big impacts, though I certainly agree with you on the intent, is a budgetary constraint, and where federal funds have been taken away from this organization, and maybe more of the burden is, would be falling on us, and maybe double the burden if we lose 50% of our contributors. So, there's, I mean, obviously, it's a big issue, and it is frankly, uh, one of the things that even at our level gets significantly affected by decisions that are made in Washington, DC, when it comes to, you know, uh, public safety. So, I, I think that is a big part of this, and, uh, I'm eager to see how we move forward with this.
No. Excellent point, Councilman Jenkins, you're right, to just, I guess, to just kind of expound You're right, I guess to just kind of expound on that point, following 9/11 and following Katrina, there were significant increases at the federal level for emergency preparedness and homeland security, lots of grant dollars and what have you, and this local office staffed and equipped itself in a way that was in line with both those resources available at the federal level as well as at the local and the state level as well. What's happened is, is that those federal dollars, again, for a myriad of reasons, have begun to diminish the sequester and just the fact that once a disaster, I guess, gets behind us, we start to forget just a little bit, so that's part of it. But as we've also been made aware, there's been a decision at the state level to keep a larger portion of those federal dollars at the state office, as opposed to funneling those dollars down to those of us here at the local level. Obviously, that's a decision that gets made in Baton Rouge as well, and one that we can protest, but unless you have a red or green button down there, it's usually pretty hard to influence. But then also, as I have expressed to all the folks involved, in similar fashion to what we have here in the city of Shreveport, when you end up with fewer resources, you don't stop doing what you're doing, you just simply accept the challenge of having to do more with less, and sometimes that more with less ends up becoming your new normal, you know, but you don't pack up your tent and decide to stop doing it altogether. And so, we certainly believe that, obviously, this office, you know, cannot exist and look in the way that it did, say, in 2003, you know, in the aftermath of 9/11, and won't look to what it did in 2006 or 2007, in the immediate aftermath of Katrina and Rita. But there is still a need in 2013, just as it was in 1953, for there to be a cooperative effort, and for that to be official, formalized, and staffed to the extent that you have the available resources to be able to do so. Otherwise, you still end up with a situation where each side is doing its own thing, but you still end up with multiple other entities that, up until now, had this one single point of contact. Now, you've got to go here and there and back and forth and not necessarily have the kind of complete seamless coordination that we have had from going back to 2011, when I was a member of the legislature, all the way up to Katrina and Rita, when I was still in the legislature, and then here as mayor, through Ike and Gustav in '08, '09. So, having seen this at multiple levels, knowing firsthand the challenges that we face in terms of responding to issues and responsibilities that entail us having to help and assist others who come from outside the community. The other level of concern, I think, that we need to be continually aware of, is what happens when we end up with an emergency that primarily affects us here? Because when you look at whether it's a tornado or something else, you know, it doesn't respect, you know, parish boundaries or city limits or what have you, and so we could end up with groups of citizens that are, you know, greatly agreed, where we would have previously had a coordinated effort to assist in addressing those issues, we now end up with one that's bifurcated and not necessarily coordinated. So, again, it's one of those things that any party has the right to make the decision that they are. It's one that I think should be a decision, at least from our side, that at least we're all aware of, we understand, and that before it ends up becoming absolutely official, that if there is a case to be made for the relationship to go forward, and the way that it has, at least we ought to make that and allow that to be responded to before we pack up our tent and go in our own direction.
Thank you, Mayor Glover.
Thank you.
At this time, does any council member have any questions, questions or concerns relative to property standards? We do not have a master plan committee report today. That brings us to public hearing. Mr. Thompson, would you please read the information related to the public hearing?
It's on proposed resolution number 208 of 2013, stating the city of Shreveport's endorsement of Home Federal Bank to participate in the benefits of the Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement Program, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Thank you. This public hearing is now open. Is there a presentation from administration, Mr. Sibley?
Yes, there is. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Ms. Bonnie Moore with Community Development to come forward and present on behalf of the administration. Thank you, Bonnie.
Good afternoon. I'm going to do this presentation for Ebony Mapp, who actually put the application together. She's on vacation this week. A Home Federal Bank has elected to submit an application under the Restoration Tax Abatement Program for the state of Louisiana for their branch located at 624 Market Street in downtown Shreveport. Under the application, the bank has made a number of improvements to their storefront and their interior of a one-story, 4260 square feet, commercial building. Constructed by Home Federal Bank in 1954, it's about 59 years old, the property anchors downtown and will maintain its longstanding use as a bank. Renovations to the property include a new storefront, refinishing and reglazing of the windows to improve installation, cleaning and repair of the north wall, preservation of marble flooring, asbestos abatement, addition of an H-back, digital control, and the addition of several executive offices. The cost of the construction today is probably about $210,000. The estimated total cost will be about $375,000. While they've maintained 17 jobs over the years, the project created 15 construction jobs, it added four permanent jobs, and these were the, will be placed in the executive offices. If this application is approved, the city will forfeit $1,251 in ad valorem taxes over the next five years. DDA, Caddo Parish School Board, and the Sheriff Office will forfeit $272, $4,117, and $419, respectively. The following pictures will illustrate the aforementioned renovations. We don't have any before pictures. The first picture...
Turn it over.
Technology is not our friend today.
I'm thinking it's going to be...
Okay. The first picture represents the storefront. As I indicated earlier, the building is about 59 years old. If you remember the old building, it really was not very pleasing to the eye. The new frontage is very appealing. The second picture represents...
Thank you.
The second picture represents the lobby. The lobby was totally redone. The walls were redone as well, including the marble floors.
Vintage, retro.
The next picture represents most of the walls that were redone in the building, and as you can see, they look much better than the old ones. And the last picture that I will share with you represents the offices, one of the offices that was redone, and again, it created four jobs, and the offices were redone to accommodate those four new jobs. Home Federal was represented by Mr. Ben Nelson, who's the branch manager. He could not be here today, so if you have any questions, I'll be more than glad to try to entertain.
Could you repeat the number that the city would forfeit?
1,251 over five years.
So, that's spread?
That's spread over five years.
Oh, not per year?
Very minimal.
Gotcha. All right.
Per year. Per year over the next five years.
Oh, per year? Okay, I thought you were saying spread over the five years.
No, per year over the next five years.
Per year, every five years, so about 5,000...
Actually, they are very minimal.
It's small.
For the results that we get from it.
Yeah, and we have also, this is the location also to keep in mind, the city has also redone the sidewalks out front with streetscaping, so the block in general, not just this building, but some of the buildings to the north of it have also had some, this has spurred a little bit of additional cleanup on those buildings as well, so that block in general is looking a lot better.
Thank you, Bonnie, and it's always good to see some of our historic downtown buildings be renovated instead of turned into parking lots or something else. As someone who's been here a long time, kind of grew up driving by that building and wondering what was in there, so that's a good thing.
Sam.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of the tax abatement?
Mr. Chairman, we would officially, from the administration's standpoint, add our support to the course of those folks who are in support of this effort. As you all mentioned, it adds a significant improvement to that area of downtown. It is across the street from an effort that was helped to be facilitated by the city of Shreveport back in the 1990s under the Williams administration, the United Jewelers Apartments, as well as Lee Hardware. Those continue to be, some 15-plus years later, still very popular and welcome additions to our downtown, and it appears if the current digs that the lovely Christie over there occupies, just south of this location, might come before a future council and a future administration for some consideration, since it appears it was recently announced that there's a three-and-a-half million dollar for sale sign that's been placed on that particular structure there. So, great things happening in downtown, but change is an ever-present constant, so we want to express our support and hope the council will give it positive consideration.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of the tax abatement ordinance? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? If not, this public hearing is now closed. Mr. Thompson, is there any legislation to be added today?
We have several items, Mr. Chairman. Would you like for me to take them one at a time?
Yes, please.
Resolution 212, it's a resolution to repeal resolution number 133 of 2012, which authorizes the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Red River Waterway District relative to the construction and maintenance of a dog park on land owned by the city of Shreveport adjacent to the Red River in Shreveport, determining that a project to construct and maintain a dog park on city-owned property adjacent to the Red River to be infeasible, encouraging the exploration of costly fishing options for construction and maintenance of a dog park at other locations within the city of Shreveport, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Question, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Thompson, will we be able to vote on this today?
If it is, I add it to the agenda. You can, it can be adopted today.
So, is a motion in?
I'll make the motion to add it to the agenda.
First, is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of adding this item to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Mayor Glover?
I want to speak on the issue in general, so I'll take some direction from you, whether that you want me to do that now or at some later point.
Now's fine.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, for both items 212 and 213, it was our intent for these matters to be allowed to be introduced as a part of the regular course of the pulling together of the council agenda. These items apparently arrived at the council office prior to the time that the council staff customarily does that, requiring this extraordinary precedent of having to have a unanimous vote, I believe, in order for this to be able to be added to the agenda and to be acted upon. It has been expressed to me that there is still a desire for there to be some considerable discussion, both amongst council members, as well as between council members and administration, as well as with the public in general, as well as some of the parties involved in some of these matters. And so, it would be our request that the council actually withdraw these measures and allow them to lay over and be introduced for their first actual consideration as a vote at the next meeting, and give us the chance to be able to continue to work with you all to answer these questions and to further engage in dialogue with other folks who are involved and have a perspective to offer.
Is a motion required to do that? I mean, they haven't been added.
I mean, I'm happy to remove my motion, if that's what...
If we just take no action on adding these to the agenda, then they just show up at our next agenda.
Correct.
Okay. I'll remove my motion.
Or if one person votes no, it doesn't get added, and then it can be added to the next meeting.
I'm not an instructionist. I'd rather we just take it off and start anew.
Mr. Thompson, I would say that let's read 213 at this point.
213.
214.
Well, I believe he asked for 212 and 213.
That's right, that's right.
The next would be 214. It's a resolution to recognize the many contributions of Bishop Fred A. Caldwell, Sr., to the greatest Shreveport community, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of adding this item to the agenda? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? If not, is there a motion to add to the agenda?
Motion by Councilman Sam Jenkins, second by Councilman Everson.
Any discussion, please vote, and that is seven yes to add to the agenda.
The next is ordinance 157. It's an ordinance adopting the 2013 Downtown Development Authority Budget.
Is there anyone present who'd like to speak in favor of adding this item to our agenda?
Chairman, 157 and 158. One is for the 2013 Downtown Development Authority Budget, and 158 is for the 2014 Downtown Authority Development Authority Budget. Those two you may want to take together.
Mr. Thompson, why don't we do this? Why don't we read through number 160 and see if we can do this in one...
159 is an ordinance amending the 2013 Grant Special Revenue Fund Budget, and 160 is an ordinance amending the 2013 General Fund Budget concerning the smoke alarm ordinance.
Is there anyone present who'd like to speak in favor of adding these items to the agenda? Is there anyone present who'd like to speak in opposition adding these items to the agenda?
Do I have a motion? Some of.
Second.
Motion by the vice chair, second by Councilman Everson, to add to the agenda, and that is six yes. All right. I believe that brings us to public comments, if I can get to the right place on my agenda. I do have two folks who had signed up to speak about the dog park resolution, even though that is not on the agenda, because they did come here in good faith to speak about it. I will allow them to speak if they still want to.
I think one probably.
The council recognized Mr. Marion Marks.
He left.
I think he left.
I saw him walk out, and Mr. Dan Keel.
I think he left.
That finishes up with public comments.
Somebody must have got a message about it being a holiday and said, hey, let's just fix this whole problem and speed it along, and I don't know who that was, I just heard that out in the hallway.
All right, Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Chairman, we have no items under the consent agenda legislation. Under the regular agenda legislation, we have 201, which authorizes the mayor to sign an engagement letter and agreement between the city of Shreveport and BKD LLP, an external audit of the city of Shreveport for fiscal year, January the 1st, 2013, through December the 3rd of 2013.
Some of.
Second. Motion by Councilman Sam Jenkins, second by Councilman Everson. If there's no discussion, please vote, and that is seven yes.
Number 202 approves the 2014 Downtown Development Authority Program of Work. There was still some discussion, I believe, about postponing this until the actual budget ordinance comes up, Paul. It depends up to the council.
I'll be happy to make that.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, second by Councilman Everson, to postpone.
Just as a point of discussion, for those who may not have been present during the conversation about this, the two that we added today are budget amendments, one's for the prior, or one's for the current year and one's for next year, and then this pertains to those. So, what we talked about doing is just postponing them until we take up all the budget amendments and doing it all at the same time.
Seven yes.
Number 203 authorizes use of certain equipment by sports spectrum race management, as the use of bicycle barricades and stage and other city-owned equipment.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Everson, second by Chair. Please vote. Seven yes.
Number 204 ratifies the use of certain equipment and festival plaza by sports spectrum race management.
Some of.
Motion by the vice chair, second by the chair. If there's no discussion... There's no discussion, please vote. I believe our own Oliver Jenkins participated in that act.
It was put to good use, let's just say that.
A hot and humid 13-mile trek around the city.
Number 205 authorizes the execution of a collective bargaining agreement with Louisiana Public Employees Council, Number 17, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local, Number 13-25, and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Motion by Councilman Sam Jenkins, second by the vice chair. Any discussion? Not, please vote. And that is seven yes.
Number 206 authorizes the mayor to execute a contract agreement between the city and Genny Drive Water System. I believe that the administration has to this be postponed.
Some o.
Second.
Motion by the vice chair, second by Councilman Everson to postpone. Any discussion? Not, please vote. Seven yes.
Number 208 states the city of Shreveport's endorsement of Holland Federal Bank to participate in the benefits of the Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement.
Some o.
Motion by Councilman Everson. Second by the vice chair, and this is related to the public hearing we just held. Please vote. Seven yes.
Number 210 declares the city's interest in certain adjudicated properties as surplus.
Some o.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman McCullough, second by the vice chair. There's no discussion, please vote. Seven yes.
Number 211 authorizes a finance director to create certain general entries relative to the closing of the Information Technology Internal Service Fund. Mr. Chairman, there's a budget ordinance on introduction which will actually budget the money for this. You may want to wait to postpone this until you can take up that budget ordinance.
Some o.
Second.
Motion by the vice chair, second by Councilwoman McCullough to postpone. No discussion, please vote. Seven yes.
Mr. Chairman, one matter that was added can be taken up at this time. It's a resolution to recognize the many contributions of Bishop Fred A. Caldwell, Senior, to the greatest Shreveport community and otherwise providing with respect thereto by Councilman Sam Jenkins.
Some o.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Jenkins, second by Councilwoman McCullough. Any discussion?
Just want to congratulate Bishop Caldwell on his 32nd anniversary in the ministry. He has done a great deal of work, not only in his church, but in the community as a whole and throughout the city. Just want him to know that. We certainly congratulate him. We keep a good eye on the things that he's doing. I really appreciate the many contributions that he has done over the years, and we appreciate the county's support on his resolution today.
And that vote is seven yes. Mr. Thompson, would you please proceed with introduction of ordinances?
On the introduction of ordinances, Mr. Chairman, there is one to be removed, I believe, Number 154, creating account for funds received through the FT 2012 Assistance and Fire Fighters.
Some o.
And I believe that ordinance Number 159 will replace that one.
Okay. Motion by the vice chair, second by Councilman Webb to remove. Councilman O Jenkins. Seven yes.
Ordinances to be introduced are 149, enacting Chapter 39 of the Code of Ordinances titled Human Relations Relative to Discrimination, Definitions, and Unlawful Practices in Connection with Such Discrimination, to provide for certain exclusions and otherwise provide with respect thereto. 150 amends and reenacts Section 10-172 of the Code of Ordinances relative to alcoholic beverages. 151 amends and reenacts Article 10 of Chapter 42 of the Code relative to charitable solicitations and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. 152 amends the 2013 General Fund Budget appropriating funds authorized therein and otherwise providing with respect thereto. This is the General Fund Budget concerning the IT matter. 153 declares a public servitude on certain adjudicated properties and otherwise provides with respect thereto. 155 is a zoning matter, C-83-13, an ordinance amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances by rezoning property located on the southwest corner of West 70th and Bernstein Avenue. And it would change the property from B3 Community Business District to B3E Community Business Extended Use District, limited to a Compress Natural Gas Fueling Station. And 156 is a zoning appeal, C-77-13. It amends Chapter 106 of the Code by rezoning property located on the southwest corner of Emery Street and Hearn Avenue from R2 Suburban Multifamily Residence Districts to B2 Neighborhood Business District. There were several items that were added on. Ordinance 157, an ordinance adopting the 2013 Downtown Development Authority Budget. 158, an ordinance adopting the 2014 Downtown Development Authority Budget. Ordinance 159, an ordinance amending the 2013 General Grant Special Revenue Fund Budget. And Number 160, which amends the 2013 General Fund Budget concerning the smoke alarm ordinance.
Some o to introduce.
Okay.
Motion by Councilman Everson, second by Councilman Oliver Jenkins.
Mr. Chairman, on Number 149, I know we have some persons who came down, I believe, that worked very hard on this ordinance, this human relations ordinance. I don't know if the authors want them to just come up and just be recognized or say hello or...
You don't want to wave.
Is that good enough?
Okay. I think before next time spoken, certainly.
Absolutely. Just, I know that they had visited with me on a number of occasions and put a lot of hard work, a lot of thought into what you're doing, so glad to see it's something that has made it to the agenda. So, congratulations to you on the introduction. Let me ask a question now on Number 151. I kind of looked at it a little bit yesterday, the night that passed, Mr. Chairman. Tell me again what we're doing with 151. I ended up getting a telephone call on it last night, and it appears that there may be some concerns that a lot of intersections that are customarily being used, police charitable organizations, if this passes, those intersections may no longer be available. I'm just trying to...
Okay. And I will summarize what the discussion was in terms of safety. Originally, there were two provisions in there. One was that intersections that at 35 miles per hour or less, one can do it. And unanimous sentiment that from both fire and police, that that was too fast for there to be cars traveling at 35, maybe 40, 45, maybe sometimes 50, with people standing up on the street corner in the intersection. Okay? That was one part of the provision. So, in this proposal, we have reduced that provision to intersections that are 25 miles per hour and less. Another part of the provision was a provision that essentially granted the chief the opportunity to waive it, and that was removed. And so...
It was removed?
So, now they'd have to come to the council if they wanted to do it as a waiver.
But there is a provision that if an organization wanted to go out and go to some of the intersections where the speed limit is more than 25, instead of going to the police chief, it'll just come straight to the council, is that what?
It's not actually written into the ordinance, but that would be under the council's normal, I guess you'd say, authority to, on certain occasions for good cause, to suspend the provisions of an ordinance.
So, a group that's, say, for instance, the Sycamore Cell, and name your foundation, and I understand the concerns of the police department, I absolutely do. I'm just trying to balance it with the, I guess, the concerns of a number of the organizations that have their annual handshakes, they put a lot of money this way.
Let me speak to this just a little bit here. And all those are good things, and God bless them, they're out there for a good cause, and I'm not trying to stop them from fundraising. When you look at this particular ordinance that's just written today, it puts the onus on me and the mayor to authorize something that the council won't do by law. And so, therefore, I'm taking on the responsibility of allowing people to go, and we did a comparison, to go into those intersections, the top 20 intersections for accidents are the intersections that they want to get into. And how can I do that in my right mind, knowing what I know, that eventually something is going to happen? Somebody's going to get hit, somebody's going to cause a wreck. It hadn't happened now, but who's liable? Is it the group that's out there soliciting? Is it the city? Is it the chief? And the bottom line is, the ordinance gives me the authority to say no. And I'm in that position, why, January 1, what it changes now, I'm going to say no. And the only reprieve is to come to this council to get you to suspend the ordinance to allow them to do so. Because right now, we have all different kinds of groups doing all different kinds of things in the middle of these high-volume intersections, that people are moving at a higher rate of speed. Now, you know, and I don't want the responsibility of telling somebody, yeah, you can get out there and they get hit, or get out there and something happens by accident, somebody slams on the brake and some kids fly through a window and dies. Who's responsible for that? Is it going to be the, whatever solicitation group, or is it going to be me? Is it going to be the mayor? Is it going to be this council? Is it going to be the taxpayers? Well, who knows? But is it worth it? There's many other ways to do that. And I know not every group does the same thing, but if you walk out this weekend, or weekends in the past, you see little youth groups out there in the middle of intersections, you see people selling papers, you see people walking up and down the middle line, you see all kinds of groups doing car washes, all kinds of things are going on. And just by the grace of God, nobody's been run over. You know, for us to put somebody at Mansfield and Burcoons, Ure and Burcoons, Hollywood and...
Ure.
And I mean, just Hollywood and Drewell, I mean, Greenwood and Drewell. I mean, just constantly, we put these people out here based on, not the council, not the ordinance, based on something that Willie Shaw has approved, has authorized with the approval of the mayor by ordinance. The ordinance says 35 miles an hour. Anything above that, then I've got to approve it. And the reason that it came to pass is I have people that sign those things for me. The guy that signed the deal for me wasn't in one day, and they brought it to me. And that's how I said, whoa, what are we doing here? Because I always thought it was by ordinance that they were out there. I didn't know that was by my authority. So, then I'm putting the city in a very litigious position, and I don't want to, I'm not going to do that.
And I could certainly understand and respect that position. Basically, what's happening here now going forward is if a group is having a annual handshake or something like that, they would have to come to the council to get, like, some exception to this.
Like you do for alcohol.
They would come, you would have to suspend the ordinance for them to operate.
Like we do for the alcohol provision.
And what was the reason for decreasing the speed limit from 35 to 25? Same, I guess the same.
The same thing, it's safety.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, I guess I go back to some comments the mayor made earlier, is one of our responsibilities is public safety. And I've been behind Mr. Shine in traffic, for instance, top-down, on his cellphone, going through an intersection.
65 miles an hour. And it's a fancy car. You've got fancy Ford cars all coming around.
But the pair scarf out, you know, the whole thing. But the point is, it's become so common in so many intersections all over town, that I almost think that the issue is who can get there first to start, whether they're raising money for their basketball program, or, you know, good causes, mediocre causes, whatever. I guess I don't want to see a situation where we put some meat into the ordinance and we make some changes, but then a group's going to come up and address the council and say, we need to do this, it's the only way we can raise money. We're going to come back and ask Chief Shaw, what do you think? He's going to say, I'm not for it, but we override it anyway. I mean, it's a good time to consider taking a stand to not have the collections going on in streets, you know, whether some of these groups end up getting directed to, you know, a business parking lot or something where they can have some sponsorship and be out in the middle of the street. But I just see issues with being in the middle of traffic, because I think we all know, even if the intersection is 35 miles an hour, 90% of the people are probably going 40 or 45 through it, or trying to beat that light. And I just think it's become a problem in the city. We talk about litter, and we talk about different things, and I think this is one of those problems.
Now, this includes the fire department?
So, that's what I was saying, just to say, he stood up there and said, I'm going to quote, he said, I recognize that my fundraiser is one of the biggest, I don't want to use the term culprits, but are going to be certainly affected by this. But he said, I can't justify it based on what I know as a public safety official. I'm continuing to allow...
I'm willing to give it a try. I guess we can see how it works out over the course of the next year. I hope we don't get into a scenario where we approve one group and not approve another group, and I guess we'll just see how it goes. Thus far, when we do our exceptions for alcohol, especially in Jeff's district, there's been consistency, so I guess I will look for it that way. Thank you so much, Chief.
Let me say this before we go on from that.
You're looking good, Chief.
I would hope...
Thank you. Wow. Single, I can do that.
You can, and you did.
I would hope that this piece of legislation, that the council would not make an exception. Because what you're looking at is putting the city in a position where they're going to be liable for three or four million dollars. We don't have that kind of money.
They sign waivers, councilmen sign. They can sign certain waivers, but I do...
I don't want to, let me say this.
You got the ball, I'm sorry.
I don't want to get into that, because as a high school coach, we used to get into that, saying that you could sign away your right, and we found out, you really can't do it. So, I, you know, Mr. Jenkins, I would, you know, I wouldn't want to get into that, but I would hope, and I'm saying this because I have some of those organizations who are members in my district, and I would hope that they would not come to me and ask me to put the city in a position where they would be liable. I would like to work with them, like Mike has said, and all of a sudden, we had a long discussion on this, work with them and find other ways by which they can raise some money. Even the fire chief came up and said that...
We've got to find another way.
He realizes that this is not good, because I've seen this. I mean, I've seen people walk down the streets and somebody behind, almost running to them. And, you know, I hate to say this on TV, but some of them were ladies and they would, I've seen them drive off cursing or saying something bad. And I, you know, I had to draw it because I knew what would happen if it hadn't been an accident. So, I understand what you're saying, and I feel for them, but it comes a time when you just have to, I don't know whether this is a good term, you have to kind of draw the line in the sand.
I will certainly vote for its introduction and reserve my...
There you go, that's right. That's right.
There's no additional discussion.
I can bring up this comment after your vote.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote. And that is seven yes.
You've received, councilmembers have received a number of emails and a letter concerning case Number 156, I mean, ordinance 156, a zoning appeal, C-77-13. I believe that Mr. Sam Jenkins talked to Mr. Anthony Washington today and Mr. Cory Booker, and based on that conversation, I told Mr. Harvard Scott that Mr. Jenkins would probably make a motion to postpone any decision on this appeal until the 20th of December.
That is correct.
So, if that motion may be...
Yeah, let's go ahead and make a motion to postpone any action on ordinance Number 156 until December 20th. I did talk with the parties involved, and that was no objection.
Motion postponed by Councilman Sam Jenkins, second by the vice chair. Please vote. Seven yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm sorry. Now, what about Number 153? They appear to be adjourned at the hip to me. That's asking for a public servitude to be on this property to accommodate the, the way I read it, that's what they're like to say.
Mr. Chairman, I can maybe provide a little information. Mr. Statlander may also. That's a procedure, it's similar to when you sell adjudicated, no, when you declare ownership of adjudicated properties, but in this case, you're declaring ownership of a, or you're declaring a servitude rather than ownership. I don't have information about how that's related to the zoning place.
Hold on, I thought, wait a minute, maybe I...
Yeah, it does mention Mr. Lebois Scott as a property owner.
This is a different...
Is it the same property, or is it the same owner?
That I don't know. That I don't know.
Um, this, this piece of legislation is directed at allowing a servitude for electrical service to the pump station. Last council meeting, you passed, uh, legislation that actually allowed the servitude over the property. That was resolution number one thirty-nine. So there's already a servitude on the property that allows us to put the pump station there. This allows us to put electrical service on it, over the property.
And that is the property that's in, that's in ordinance one fifty-six? Is it the same?
The current ordinance? Yes.
Right.
No, one fifty-three.
They're talking about a zoning ordinance.
Yeah, zoning ordinance, one fifty-six, I understand that some property's gonna be developed, and it's, Mr. Scott owns a lot that's next to it.
Correct.
The lot that's next to the property being developed, is, is number one fifty-three? Is that the same?
That's correct, yes, sir.
The same parcel property?
That's right. And Mr. Scott is deceased.
Yeah, but his son...
Yeah, but his son...
Right.
His son is the one that's, uh...
Right, and it is an adjudicated property, and like Ms. Glass said, this doesn't, um, forbid him from getting compensation that he would be due for the servitude if he would settle his tax liabilities on the property.
Okay.
Okay, they seem to be something separate.
Well, but I mean, okay, so, but let's start from the beginning. So, you've got a landowner that is objecting to the neighbor's parcels rezoning, correct?
Right.
Okay. Now, as part of that neighbor's rezoning, that neighbor has asked for this servitude so that he can get power and, uh, whatever the other thing is that, to the property for its new use, is that correct?
City's asking for the servitude.
To support his intended use on that particular, this new revised zoned use, right?
Yes.
That's what, what we're talking about? Okay. Now, for some reason, if we were to overturn the zoning application, would the city still be requesting this servitude?
That's the question, yeah. That's what I'm...
And I, I mean...
I think they're connected.
I, I have to agree with you that I don't think we'd be requesting it.
Would we need it otherwise, Mal?
I, I do not have an answer for that. We're, we would, yes, according to Barbara, we would still need it.
For the pump sta, this is for the pump station?
For the pump station, though, it's, uh, okay.
Then we would still need it.
Well, the property, here says no municipal address, is that the same property?
The lot that Mr. Scott has?
Yeah.
It's no house on it, I think it's just a lot.
There is, there is no municipal address, that is correct. And the, the property, uh, I mean, it's a lot number. It is, um, lots two and three, block two, West Shreveport subdivision.
If we have a map, can we, I mean, next meeting, we'll, we'll get all of that information to everybody to see what's...
All right, but just know that we may postpone it along with the other item. Uh, right now, we, we may not have to do it now.
If they're connected.
Yeah, if it comes up and it's connected, we may postpone that.
All right.
That's kind of amazing, that. Could be a coincidence that they're both showing up on the agenda the same day.
All right, Mr. Thompson, I believe we are at ordinance six, so second reading and final passage.
One forty-three, amends a twenty thirteen capital improvements budget. This is concerning Spohtran.
Motion by Councilman Everson, seconded by, by, uh, Councilman Sam Jenkins. Sorry, I was multitasking. Seven yes.
One forty-four amends a twenty thirteen general fund budget. This concerns Spar's operating budget and its moving funds around, I believe.
So move. Motion by Councilman Sam Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Spar seems to move a lot of money around.
Seven yes.
One forty-five amends a twenty thirteen community development special revenue fund. Uh, it's a request to transfer general fund dollars from Community Development Housing Bureau to Community Development Administration.
Second. Motion by Councilman Sam Jenkins, seconded by the vice chair. Any discussion? Not, let's vote. Seven yes.
Well, one forty-six revises amends and enacts section seventy-eight dash three eighty-six of the code, uh, to, relative to permit, permit, permits required. It concerns the fees, the durations, the waiver of that fee, and otherwise provides with respect that there too.
Second. Motion by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins. Any discussion? Not, let's vote.
One forty-seven amends a twenty thirteen...
Seven yes.
Too fast, Mr. Chairman.
You're, you're headed toward that clerk's report.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Excited.
Uh, one forty-seven amends a twenty thirteen capital improvements budget. This concerns a twenty thirteen airport capital private...
So move. Second. Motion by Councilman Sam Jenkins, seconded by the vice chair. Any discussion? Not, please vote. Seven yes.
One forty-eight repeals ordinance number one twelve of twenty thirteen, which created a two-way stop intersection at Crestwell Avenue and South Hill Road, and it enacts the intersection of Crestwell and South Hill as a four-way stop intersection.
So move. Second. Motion by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, seconded by Councilman Everson. And I will note that the First Lady of District D will now speak to you again. Seven yes. Mr. Thompson, is there any table legislation to be considered today?
Chairman, yesterday we discussed removing, uh, ordinance number one thirteen, one fourteen, and one fifteen from the agenda, since this will be in the twenty fourteen budget.
Okay. So move, Mr. Chairman. Motion by the vice chair, seconded by the chair. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Chairman, I would also...
Seven yes.
Uh, indicate that even though we are not advocating, uh, removing the budget ordinances from the agenda, they can be and should be voted on at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
From the table. You were on your way to quite a first foot report explaining that one.
We have no property standards...
It's all you're looking at, the fines, huh?
No property standards appeals today, no ABO appeals. Uh, we do have a Metropolitan Planning Commission or a zoning appeal. Uh, Mr. Thompson, would you please read?
Uh, it's zoning appeal, BAC one thirty-three dash thirteen. Thirty forty-nine Martin Luther King Floyd Edward Williams is the applicant south side of MLK, two hundred feet west of Havana. Uh, special exception use and variance in size and number of accessory structures in an R one H SBI two district.
I'd like to speak before we...
Councilman McCullough.
Yes, um, at our last meeting, uh, there was a request from the council regarding the actual application date, um, that Mr. Uh, that Floyd, uh, Mr. Williams submitted, um, versus the actual date that the ordinance was passed by the city. As I understood, uh, prior to today's meeting, the MPC actually passed this ordinance prior to it being presented to the city council. And of course, there was proper notification, according to Roy, uh, of the ordinance change. Um, as most of you are that were here at our last meeting witnessed, uh, Mr. Williams expressed that, uh, he did not file the application, uh, at a reasonable time, which, uh, based on what I'm showing here, he possibly filed his application more than thirty days after the ordinance, uh, had passed. Um, since I've been in office this, this term as city council representative and attending several association meetings, uh, with MLK CDC, MLK Association, um, and some of the other community groups, um, as well as Southern University. And being a, um, a member of the master plan committee and actually visiting the master plan for the city of Shreveport and this particular area, this would actually go against the ideas and the plans, uh, of the master plan. So for that reason, I am going to uphold the decision of the MPC. Um, and I would appreciate this council's support.
All right, and Mr. Williams, would you like to address the council?
Yeah, Floyd Williams, uh, twenty thirty, um, twenty-two oh-three, West Algonquin Trail. I, um, I think that you all have done your research and made your decision, and, um, at this point, we're just moving on. Uh, I hope you all have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
You too, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. White, Ms. Rogers. Thank you for being here today.
Mr. Chairman, who's second with the motion?
Motion by Councilman McCullough, seconded by Councilman Sam Jenkins.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, let's vote. And that is seven yes. I believe at this time, that brings us to reports from officers, boards, and committees. Do we have any reports at this time?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the, if I may, uh, the Audit and Finance Committee report, uh, the committee met on Friday, November the eighth, twenty thirteen, at ten AM, and we reviewed recently issued internal audit reports. Among those was the landfill division, property tax refunds, and engineering. The audit reports concern administrative issues and concerns. Uh, city administration said they will put in place the necessary internal controls and procedures to correct the problems identified in the reports. The committee will continue to monitor these areas and others to ensure management has established the appropriate procedures to operate efficiently and effectively. That's our report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins. Um, I guess as a last official duty as chairman, um, if there is no objection, I would like to propose creation of a subcommittee of the Infrastructure Committee. For lack of a better name, I'm gonna call it the Dog Park Committee. Um, after thinking about all of our discussion we've had, especially yesterday, telephone calls and emails, I, I think a lot of the activity around the dog park continues to come back to, we're not talking about the right things. And certainly, everyone has an opinion about that, but I propose that we set up a subcommittee under the Infrastructure Committee. Councilman Everson chair that, if he's willing.
Just a point of order, um, was curious, do we have a dog park study group already? There was a group that, I remember, before any of this got to the point where we are now, there was a group that was meeting to talk about, you know, what the, what needed to be in the application, what made a site appropriate or not appropriate, um, and Shelley, is that, was that a sort of an ad hoc and administrative forum? I don't remember what.
We had representation from the parish, from both parish legal as well as, uh, animal control.
That may have just been a working group, but it was definitely a group that met regularly.
Yeah, it was not a formally, uh, the council didn't create that committee. It was a committee that we put together of, um, groups of people who had either an interest, maybe it had fallen in your council districts, some of the locations that we were talking about, and then just, um, experts in their fields, like animal control, the police department, parish officials. So it wasn't an official committee of the city council. It was a working committee that we put together at Spar to start looking at ordinances, locations, et cetera.
Well, that may be a good group to include as the, you know, as the basis of this group.
Let's consider this, if, if this works, let's create it as a council committee, but be sure, and Jeff, if you would chair it through infrastructure, the two other council members to be on it, certainly administration, Ms. Regal. I'd like somebody from the dog park to always be included, Dog Park Alliance, and somebody from the parish if they would like to be there. I'd like to see, and I know this is a short timeframe, but I'd like to see information come back to the council by December twentieth. And we have the top three sites. We define what are the requirements, and I know this, part of this is an exercise that's gone through before, but we can't seem to agree on it. I'd like to see this committee come back and say, what are the minimum requirements that Shreveport will accept in a dog park? If it's just a gate and a fence, fine. If it's a gate and a fence and three benches, if it's, you know, whatever it is, we need to define, these are the minimum requirements associated with each of these sites moving forward. Attach some cost to that, because we have cost estimates running out our ears, so I think we can attach cost to that, and what funding sources are out there. And I think that we owe it to the citizens and to ourselves to have that information and be ready to discuss it December twentieth, if at all possible. If there's no objection, let's go forward.
Mr. Chairman?
May I?
Would that, on the twentieth of, of December, what form of decision would you envision the council being in a position to make? Uh, I offer that because the, obviously, we've had, uh, various forms of draft resolutions before the council dating back to September, if not August. Uh, we've also continually asked for some alternative, uh, scenario that, that some council member might be willing, uh, to, to step up and offer. Uh, we also offered, uh, a draft, uh, budget ordinance that would have actually created a project. Again, no council member, uh, has stepped up at this point. So specifically, by the time, and we've obviously asked for the resolution two twelve, that's on the agenda, uh, to be postponed to give some additional time in line with what, what you're suggesting, so that, so that we're understanding and we're clear, by the time we get to the twentieth of December, uh, is, what would be the decision, or what particular actual instruments would the council be acting on, deciding, debating, discussing at that point?
I'd like to see a recommendation on December twentieth. Here is our preferred, agreed-upon site. Here's what we want there. Here's our funding source. Here's how to move forward. Because I, I just think we, we continue to get distracted in some of our conversations about what we're doing. I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to say we could do this and have it in two weeks. I'm not sure that can happen. But, you know, as, as I go back and I reflect on our conversations yesterday, we just, we can't even agree on the definition of what we want a dog park to be. And I think if we can't, if we can't get past those basic points, we're never gonna get to the point of, how do we fund it? Where do we put it? Or, or any of that? And, you know, I'm, I'm just one voice tossing this out there. And, you know, if we can refine it a little bit, or somebody's got some better suggestions, let's get serious.
Question, Mr. Chairman, will the administration be providing those figures we were, uh, referenced yesterday fairly quickly, or?
We, we will work as quickly as, as, as we can to get what the, what the council and the, and the public needs in order to be able to, to make a decision. Uh, and I guess part of what I would, I would also, um, and we'll target next week, Mr. Web, to try and, and get that. In fact, we were prepared today, if necessary, to come up and talk about some of those other considerations as well, but we'd rather, uh, put those on paper for you. But I think part of what, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I want to offer is that, uh, let's make sure we don't lose sight of the, uh, appropriate role and perspective of the staff, uh, who we ask to give us the benefit of their professional knowledge. Uh, because the last thing that we ultimately end up needing to try and do in an effort to try and fix, what obviously, as an administration, we think is a partly flawed, fatally flawed set of circumstances, we end up deviating from what should be best practices. If Mr. Webb tells me that we're gonna build, uh, that we want to build tennis courts out in, in West Shreveport, then I don't need to come up and try and figure out how we come up with a tennis court that can, uh, end up... come up with a tennis court that can end up shaving a few feet off of the end and edge and what have you, so we can fit, given a set of circumstances, if what's needed is an appropriately designed tennis court. The same as if we're designing a baseball field or soccer fields. Those need to be done in a way and a fashion that meet some minimally acceptable standards. The staff refers to those as best practices. If the intent here is to come in and take what is, especially with regard to the riverfront area, Clyffan Parkway, the most prized piece of land that we all collectively own here in the city of Shreveport as Shreveporters, and end up with a design standard or quality level that is not in line with that, then that is something, obviously, I think we need to not allow ourselves to get shoehorned into in our efforts to try and appease a group of folks who have started us off with bad information down the road that's led us to a point to where this situation is where it is. With regard to the estimates, there are only three that are out there right now, in terms of a basic dog park. That's what staff came up with, and as was requested by at least three council members, independent estimates of the staff work, that both came in at numbers $60,000 and $110,000 higher than what the staff had put together. But certainly, we will engage and provide all that we can to ultimately, hopefully, put a council in a position to make a decision on this. Frankly, Mr. Chairman, would have liked to have it done before your chairmanship is up. It certainly should happen before this calendar year resolves itself, because there are way, way, and I don't want to overemphasize that, but there are way, way more important issues that this council, this administration, and the citizens of the city of Shreveport should be engaged and involved in. And frankly, you know, I should have thought, to think rather, just how much further we would be along in so many other areas, had we managed to be able to effectively channel this much civic energy, you know, this much political capital into some of those worthwhile adventures. We just had a man come down here, well, two men actually, talk to us about economic development, entrepreneurship, our hospital that's now been taken over and run by a group of private, non-elected citizens, and none of us had a question for them. You know, but we're going to sit here and spend, you know, yet another part of a calendar year chasing down, you know, this dog park. So I appreciate you giving us a deadline, which is the 20th, which we will take, and hopefully what that will represent ultimately, is some action that we can put ourselves in a position between now and then that puts this issue to risk, that has no other lawyers out here clocking hours, you know, folks who take umbrage at that and think that that's something that represents a problem. Had it not been for that action to put us in this position, we'd be heading on a path right now that would be resulting in even hundreds of thousands of dollars more than what we spent on legal fees. And so, again, we accept the challenge. We hope to be able to put ourselves in a position to meet with you guys. In fact, I'd like to suggest as early as next Monday or Tuesday, because that's when we were going to be reaching out to you all and other folks to engage them. But we're amenable as early as this Monday or Tuesday to sitting down, to figuring out how to put a point on this. And please, let's make this a, more of a two-way deal, because as I said earlier on yesterday, you've got Resolution 133 from 2012 that all seven of you guys voted on. The one thing I'm convinced of right now, that there's at least a few of you who wouldn't vote for it today. And there's some of you who would want to not vote for it today. And if that is the case, then we need to ultimately understand that that's not in the best interest of the city of Shreveport and do something about it.
Thank you, Mayor Glover. And I agree. I mean, I think that we have talked about best practices, and we come back to what's the minimum we can do. In the end, if we're going to move forward with a dog park, it's a city park, and it should not be short-cotted or treated any differently than any other city facility. If we were opening, opening those four new soccer fields, we would not say, well, we can't afford grass. So I think it's time to get serious about this, look at a deadline, and let's get past this, because you're right. We've got many issues that affect far more people.
Chairman.
Mr. Thompson.
I have a question for the record. Did the motion to approve the minutes include November the 11th, November the 12th, and November the 18th?
They may not have included the 18th, Mr. Thompson. Can I amend, or do we need to make a second motion just for the 18th?
Why don't we just do a motion to?
So move for the 18th, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion to approve minutes of the 18th. Motion by the Vice Chair, second by Councilman Webb. Please vote. That is seven yes. Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That would not be your clerk's report, would it?
Yes, yes, it was.
That's why I was laughing. You got off right easy there. Is there a motion for the council to resolve itself? Give me the whole. Second. Motion by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, second by the Vice Chair. Please vote. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Oh, that's seven yes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of November 11th? Motion by the Vice Chair, second by Councilman Sam Jenkins. Please vote. Seven yes. Mr. Mayor, Communications.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You heard me earlier with great excitement announce the official opening of at least a portion of I-49 North. Unfortunately, I must now share with you a point of great sadness, is that there's already been the first fatality at the intersection of I-49 and 71, where state crews were still, at that point, monitoring the operation of the red lights at that intersection, there was a fatal accident. A gentleman who was driving northbound rear-ended another vehicle, and a 26-year-old young person won't get a chance to be able to share Thanksgiving with his family. But I guess with great excitement, there's also, we sometimes, at least some degree of sadness. So we are thankful for the opening, but express our sentiments to the family. Also, Mr. Chairman, want to again remind the council that we are hopefully going to be able to coordinate schedules between the parish for the 13th of December. We're hoping that that date will work. If not, we definitely know that the intergovernmental meeting between the parish and the city, and this is one that probably involves, at least to a certain extent, the school board, certainly the sheriff, and anybody else that we can manage to get to convene with us. But certainly, at least the city and the parish need to visit during the month of December in anticipation of the next meeting of the Executive Council of the Cattle Boja Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness. Also want to stress, and you'll be seeing some formal announcements on this over the next date or so, on December 7th, we'll be convening the update, planning, and feedback session for the Shreveport Cattle Master Plan 2030, and would encourage the opportunity for folks to come out and participate in that. And we're very excited next week, right at the beginning, to welcome the folks who will be here with rendezvous south on December 2nd and 4th. And then lastly, again, also be on the lookout for some time, and we're going to attempt to do this before Christmas rolls around as well, where we'll have a chance to be able to go out, invite citizens, and most specifically, the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality, and hopefully, a new player to this dialogue, the Federal Environmental Protection Agency, to talk about the situation at the Harrelson landfill, and see if we can't see some progress made in that area. So with that, Mr. Chairman, turn it back over to you and wish all of you, as well as all the citizens of the city of Shreveport, a happy and warm and safe Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mayor Glover. Any additional communications from council members?
I have a question.
Councilwoman McCullough.
Mayor Glover, did you mention something about a meeting tomorrow?
Yes. We'll be asking you, if you have some time, I'd like to sit and visit with you sometime mid-morning, early afternoon.
Okay, all right. I thought it was a collector. I didn't know. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to send Thanksgiving greetings also to all of our citizens, and especially my constituents in District G. Thank you so much for your support over the course of this past year. So many of the meetings that I went to this year, I think we've talked about so many things we've accomplished for the district, and so I just wanted to know how much I appreciate them. It's always very supportive. Any criticism is always taken constructively, and I look forward to another year as your representative here at the city council. Want to also say to those who will be traveling to New Orleans for the big game this weekend between Southern and Grambling, I did say Southern first, and then Grambling, in New Orleans, please travel safely. Remember that it's just a game, and Councilman Shine, and Councilwoman McCullough, you know, Saturday during those few hours, that's the only time that we have something against each other, other than that, we're friends, okay? I do hope that both teams will travel safely.
They're riding together down there, isn't it?
They may be. They need all the help they can get.
Oh, Sam, wait a minute now.
They may need to suit up, frankly.
Wait a minute, all of them.
But let me just finish. I do hope that both teams will have a good game, and that everybody will have a job of time over Thanksgiving weekend. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Think they're going to show up?
That's another question.
And show up.
Please, go fast.
Last thing, I did want to also wish a happy Hanukkah to all of those in the Jewish community. It is following unseasonably early this year, and for the first time since 1888, the first night of Hanukkah is also going to be the first night, their days start night before. So the first day of Hanukkah is the same day as Thanksgiving this year. It won't happen again for another 79,000 years, so probably never again. So happy Thanksgiving to everyone who celebrates.
pessimism.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor Glover.
Please, before we adjourn, want to, to make the council aware, and to ask that you all be in prayer for one of our own. For many of you all who traversed back and forth across Government Plaza, you may have remembered, tall, thin gentleman, drove a van, made deliveries for the finance department, Vernon Powell, one of our longtime employees, passed away in his sleep this week. And his services will be this Saturday with Heavenly Gates.
Family Hour.
Family Hour will be tomorrow at 5:00.
Friday at Heavenly Gates.
Friday at Heavenly Gates, I'm sorry. And funeral will be this coming Saturday. So be in prayer. I believe Vernon was much older than I am, and obviously was much thinner, so you never know exactly when or where your time may be, but we certainly pray that he is somewhere close to the Lord tonight. Thank you much, and keep his family lifting in prayer.
Thank you.
I'll do.
Also, would also note, Mr. Chairman, as I mentioned on yesterday, that this, the 4th, Tuesday in November of 2013, represents the 35th anniversary of the actual formal impaneling of this form of government 35 years ago. This 4th Tuesday in November of 1978, seven individuals, along with Mayor Billy Hannah, first took their oath and were inaugurated into this mayor council form. And want to recognize that fact, and hopefully have folks reflect very fondly on what that has represented for the city of Shreveport. Some folks tend to like maybe the more efficient form that existed prior to it. All the folks who served at that point in time, from the mayor to the commissioners, all came essentially from the same zip code. What you see now is seven single-member districts that effectively represent the seven various corners and regions of this city, all of whom have the opportunity to have their viewpoints and perspectives represented before this governing body. And from where I sit, that's a good thing.
And you know, I find it quite interesting, look like most mayors, since that form of government, has come from the council. Maybe without the exception, maybe the exception of one, maybe?
That was the first one. The first one did not, obviously, because it wasn't a council to come from at that time, but every other one since that time.
Just an interesting observation.
Absolutely. Quite interesting.
I agree with it.
No, it's a historical fact. It's a historical fact.
And quite relevant, I would all.
At this point, we're going to move into public comments, and the council now recognize Mr. Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana 71101. I'm in District B of Jeff Everson. I would also like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving as well. It's just going around, so I thought I might as well throw mine in, too. And I also will say that I don't really plan on being alone on Thanksgiving, because I think that the Line Avenue Burger King will be open about 12 noon, so I'll get away from the television, Ron, as I'm sure you'd want, and find myself over at Burger King watching TV there. Maybe they'll have one of the football games on that I'll be interested in while I'm eating. I would like to say also that since I heard earlier about the December 20th, maybe something can be compromised about the dog park, because I've sat back and I haven't said anything about the dog park at all. I believe that a compromise will be able to be worked out, just as long as that whining, Missy Hyatt is not there with those dogs and doing all her little whining, and Dr. Phil being an idiot. Because if those two were there, and all the dogs were getting walked around, she and Dr. Phil would probably have a few words exchanged, where he might say, "I think that you might be using the wrong utensil when you eat," and she'd say, "Well, look at, look at the mirror, look at you! Who do you think you are?" And she might look at the dogs, and one of them might bark, she'd say, "You leave me alone!" And all that whining is something I'm sure that the public could not deal with. They don't need anyone acting like a fool. And of course, Jeff, I think I told you about that earlier before the meeting started, we don't need one of them.
And so she, and I was trying to understand, so he's referencing Missy Hyatt. I'm not familiar with her, but what program is she from?
This girl.
Maybe the mayor, no, but does the mayor know?
I thought it was a wrestling reference. I thought she was a...
Actually, she was.
See? Okay, okay.
But all these...
My Mid-South neighbor.
I don't know if she ever tuned into Mid-South, but she was in the UWF, and she still whined, as well as in World Class, over in Dallas-Fort Worth. But this girl is one you don't need out there at the dog park doing all that stuff. And then when a dog would bark a herd, she might say, "You stop that right now before something falls off! Who do you think you are?" So we wouldn't need that, or her saying like, "I want this, I want that, give me this, give me that." I don't think the dog park could deal with any person like that, so I just had to bring this to your attention. We don't need one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Sammy. And I guess if the dog park part of it doesn't work out, we can always have wrestling matches out there.
Please, I just ate.
All right. At this time, we will now reconvene the regular council meeting, and it is time for election of council officers. And I will entertain a motion for chairman of the council.
I'll make a motion for Councilman Shine.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, second by Councilman Everson. All in favor? Please vote. With your right hand. And that is, Councilwoman McCullough, was that your hand in the air?
I've been beaten, and evidently it doesn't want me to vote, Councilman Shine, for some reason.
It is six yes.
It's actually supposed to be seven.
It's six, because Councilman Shine can't vote.
I can't vote.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for Councilman Everson as vice chair.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, second by incoming chair.
Mr. McCullough, you have to raise your hand.
Jeff Everson.
It's not working?
She's not in the room.
Oh, okay.
And that is six yes. Gentlemen, I turn the gavel over. The committee rises and reports, and this meeting is adjourned. Chairman, thank you. Send me to the committee.
I tell you what, you won't get bored. You will not get bored if you had to come to the committee.
Yeah, Councilman Shine, I guess that's what I needed to tell that brother, you just can't win.